Feelings are sometimes hard to hold back.
All right, so we are, JJ, can we start this now? We are in session for our workshop. As Commissioner Boyce stepped out for a second, as soon as he gets back in, we will begin.
Fortman's the major player. Yeah, parks have been amazing. So it makes me question what was going on previously.
Tell them we're ready for them.
These must be dog lovers.
I'll get it. Hello? Hung up again.
I think he got it after two.
I got that one after two. That was definitely the right button. If you have her number, we'll call her, yeah. While you're doing that, we are in session, it is October 21st at 2:05 PM. This is a workshop for animal services and code enforcement. We're having a special call in for public comment. Boy, she called right exactly 2 o'clock, too.
Hello?
Hello, Mary.
Ms. Rowe, this is Commissioner Pash. If you could stand by just one second, please.
Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Thank you.
All right, so, uh... This is, uh, going to be a presentation of Commissioner Gold as the liaison for code enforcement, and David Fortman. First, we have a public comment from a citizen, Ms. Rowe. Uh, I know you and I spoke, you might go just the 30 seconds over, so if you would like to, go ahead and begin.
Thank you, um, Chair Pash, and I don't need the extra 30 seconds. Um, my name is Mary Rowe, I'm here in support of county animal control and its further development. For years, our county did not have animal control, and as a result, many animals and people were hurt and animals died. Countless residents had to go to incredible lengths to save animals. For instance, I had to carry an abandoned cat six miles, then take the transit and hand off the cat to a friend who donated money to the Humane Society when a volunteer came to get the cat from her when the Humane Society was closed. When a person on court-ordered probation who had killed a puppy in front of many witnesses illegally got another puppy and was mistreating him, Catherine, the director of Pennies for Pooches, and I asked the Sheriff's Department for help. They were so short-staffed that it took about a month to take care of it. I had to help a tiny dog. Catherine asked the Gold Beach Police Chief for help, but he refused to help. When I went to talk to Catherine about it, she was yelling that she had to do everything herself, she was very upset. Four days later, she died of a heart attack. There was also a large dog running loose and attacking dogs whom a Gold Beach Police Officer and Mark, the then-director of Pennies for Pooches, could not get into a police car, I witnessed this. The dog of a homeless person was repeatedly kicked when he became too old and sick to keep up. District Attorney Everett Dial witnessed this and reported it to the Gold Beach Police, and they were not willing to do their job. The dog was also in pain from a hugely swollen eye from being punched by another homeless person, and as a pit bull with extremely short fur was outside for winter mucks without a coat on. My leash dog was physically attacked numerous times by unleashed dogs. I hope that the leash laws will be enforced to a greater extent, and with advising rather than penalties when possible. The establishment of more dog parks would help, and public education could prevent many problems. Wild Rivers Animal Rescue has lost four directors in about five years and is now an all-volunteer organization. I am concerned that our county is contracting this and is thus accountable for animals our county staff place in their care, and wonder if our county government could even be legally liable. There should be professional oversight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rowe. All right, Ms., Commissioner Gold, go ahead.
I'd just like to tell you how impressed I've been with Dave Fortman in working with both the animals and working with the code enforcement. He has looked at over 1,400 properties, blighted properties, in the county, and, uh, some of those cases are closed, some of them are open, but I appreciate his approach to taking care of these matters in a kind and way that people can take care of their problems without having the hard hammer come down on them. So we'll turn this over to Dave, and I'll let you give your report.
Mr. Fortman.
Oh, if you want us to do public comments? Okay, do we have public that wants to speak?
No.
Oh, afterwards? Okay, doesn't matter, after, before. I knew Dave had some issues he had to take care of, so...
Go to slideshow, where's the mouse at?
He's got it.
Go to slideshow, and from the beginning, there you go. Yeah, bring the mouse over, and that way you can click it.
Do you want Chris to...
I'll do it for you, yeah. The mouse is right there, right? I'll click them for you, you just wave at me. Mr. Fortman, every time you talk, we learn. Good stuff.
That's frightening. Okay, thank you for the time, Dave Fortman, Curry County Code Enforcement Officer. First, I want to just start with a real quick acknowledgements. Animal Control Services that we've taken over has been run, kind of like the speaker that was on the phone, by volunteers and the public, and every day, the public gets involved in animal issues out there and, uh, picking up animals that are loose on the street, dealing with a biting animal, dealing with all the problems. And the word's just now getting out that we have an animal control unit here, and what does the community expect of us. So this is just a quick overview of where I'm gonna go in my presentations, and click the next one, Commissioner, thank you. And I do want to say acknowledgements besides thank you to the public for caring about this. I want to thank Commissioner Pash for giving us the pleasure of running Animal Control Services, Commissioner Gold for all of her support, and Commissioner Boyce also for the aggressive animals and all the support that you've given us, too. Uh, and also, we are in a cooperative, collaborative relationship with all law enforcement agencies in the county. So, a quick 30-second history, I'm actually gonna make my hour briefer than usual. Animal Control statutes in the state of Oregon actually date back to 1953 and essentially have been unchanged since 1953. Curry County created an animal control district at the behest of the state of Oregon, as many counties did, in 1966. We wrote the statutes, they've never been updated, they've never been looked at. Originally, animal control was a function within our Sheriff's Department, we've migrated it to, um, a nonprofit organization, and now back, back to code enforcement. So this is kind of the history where we got to. Uh, so, if you go to the next... Thank you, Commissioner. So, when code enforcement took this over, our mission stayed before it is that Curry County Animal Services' mission is to protect people, their pets, and other animals, and to promote the quality of life associated with people and animals within our community. People is the number-one concern of animal control. People getting bitten, people getting attacked, people, um, running off the road to avoid animals, uh, health hazards, all that, so people come first. We approach Animal Control Services, and we named this Curry Animal Services versus Animal Control because we are a service organization. Ninety-nine percent of what my department does is education, collaboration, and getting talking people into it. We issue very, very few citations and penalties. We are a responsive organization versus proactive. Some counties have animal services where they go out and patrol for stray animals and biting animals and deal with the problems. Curry County has followed the pattern that code enforcement was in that we react to complaints versus going out and chasing dogs. So one of the things I'm gonna just personally say, I hate being called the dog catcher of Curry County. I don't chase dogs. We provide services to the county, 8 to 6, Monday through Saturday, for all services, and 24/7, 365, and, uh, at all other times. So, one of the things, talking about where we're at, from my, the first slide of 1960s to here, our communities changed. We don't get Lassie and Rin Tin Tin anymore. People get Killer, and Butch, and Spike, and every other animal they can get. We don't limit pets. Pets are no longer considered just dogs in community. One of the first problems I have, I was amazed with, is how many people have 200-pound pigs in their houses as their pets, have geese in their houses, uh, have peacocks in their houses, and I'm not talking in the yard, I'm talking about in their houses. So our concept of what is a pet in this county has changed since the 1960s, where our laws haven't. We have, uh, the laws when they were written in the 1960s dealt with the issues in the 1960s. The majority of Article IV, our statutes, talk about dogs chasing cattle, killing cattle, injuring people, okay, and, and those kind of statutes, a little bit about dog nuisances, but it was tailored to the times. It wasn't tailored to what we're seeing today. And in the few hours of just between handling a couple calls this morning and this presentation, I've gotten six animal problems today. I've, my deputy is on a search warrant in South County for aggressive dogs that are guarding a house. Uh, we have abandoned dog, we have a dog bite, we had dogs in the highway. Uh, this is just this morning. Since I was on call on Saturday, went back on call on Saturday evening, I'm looking at 18 calls, including, uh, two peacocks attacking senior citizens in their yard.
Don't laugh.
Emergency call Saturday night of a little lady who collapsed in her house, and when they found her and called the ambulance, her husband had died a couple of months ago. She wouldn't leave until we came and impounded her animal for protective custody. Held up the paramedics. Dogs running at large, dogs in traffic, um, dog attacking another dog at, at Battle Cr- Battle Rock. Forty cats in a house in Langlis was reported. Twelve dogs at State Line was reported this morning, barking next to everybody's house, and they are giant dogs, big 75-pound puppies that are down there. So the, the issues of what we do from what happened in 1960 has changed. So what you have on the slide, you see some of the basic services, and it's kind of listed in our, our, uh, priority list. We deal with lost and found animals, dogs, cats, and horses. It is nothing for, to be sitting there trying to watch a football game on Sunday and get a phone call about cattle running down the highway, and we're expected to try to find them, and we'll talk about what we're trying to do with it. Sick and injured animals, every day. Somebody goes to the hospital, there's nobody to take care of their animal, somebody gets hurt in an auto accident, they get arrested, code enforcement gets called, and we go out and take care of their animals. We also, the, for the Health Department, do all the animal bite investigations in the county. We're trying to control the licensing and rabies, and we're dealing with the dangerous animal issues in this county. And dangerous animals have changed, they're, again... I know one of the concerns that was talked about a week ago was the wolf breeds, hybrids. Um, we haven't, several of them here, we've dealt with them, but we deal with other breeds every day that are attacking, and at least a couple times a month, we get called out in the middle of the night where dogs are attacking somebody, and the police are on the scene, and we're called to corral the animals. We work with the animal shelter, uh, and it's, our program is to protect animals, so we work with them on the adoption or abandonment or impound of animals, and one of the hardest things for the community to understand is that we're not the old dog catcher. Animals that go into the shelters aren't being killed, they aren't being taken away from people without due process. We do everything we can, including, we've entered into agreements with other counties, where we shipped animals to other counties to find them better homes than what we have here. Next slide, Commissioner. One of the things we deal, deal with is emergencies. Again, code enforcement, my deputy and I are on call 24/7, 365. I've had a couple department heads saying, "That's a joke, why are you responding to calls?" I'm gonna use a line from an old movie that hopefully people will laugh about, is "Who are you gonna call?" At 2 o'clock in the morning, it's gonna be us. We also assist with the law enforcement agencies on cruelty, animal cruelty cases, mistreatments, et cetera. Misconception, I've already kind of hit this, but what the biggest problem that we have dealing with animal services and the shelters have, too, is understanding what we're trying to do, and understanding that a dog license has been required since the 1950s. Yet 99% of the people I talk to and ask them where their dog license is, we didn't know we needed a dog license, and it's required in every state in the country, and that's for the protection of the animal. So the next thing we get, and I'm gonna take from you, Commissioner, when you're trying to start talking about taking money from the public for feet, is, "What are you doing with that money? Oh, the evil government wants that money to run their government." By statute, 100% of the money collected on a dog license is only used for do- for animals. It's used to pay the shelter cost, it's used to pay the emergency vet cost in the middle of the night, um, and we're looking to expand that to pay for training programs and low-cost and no-cost vaccination clinics throughout the county to deal with our things. Low-cost and no-cost, um, spay-and-neuter clinics to deal with all of the feral, feral animals that are out here. That money isn't going into the government and being siphoned to other departments. It's by statute, the money has to be spent for animals, or as I understand it, the board needs to make at the end of the fiscal year, if there's money left over, that's when you can make a proclamation to transfer that money to somebody else.
I just have one quick question. Since the statutes haven't been updated since, was it 1964?
1964.
Are we in the process of doing that?
That's the purpose, if I want to get to, and a couple slides down.
Okay.
We need directions, and this same presentation has been made, making, being made to all three cities. The, and it, Curry County Animal District was created that we serve all three cities and the county, so code enforcement's involved. And we're looking for our leaders' directions as to how far you want us to go. Like I said, we've been a responsive agency, not a proactive agency. We did two proactive activities in the last year. One was down in Mill Beach when the city of Brookings was having a spade of dog bites in a couple of days from the tourists, and people wa- letting their dogs run free, so we spent a day on Mill Beach talking to people about the leash laws and the dog licenses and all that. Some communities use proactive patrols when they have a problem, where you keep seeing the same dogs or animals running in an area, and that's where the, the officers will go into that county and try to really solve the problem on that. But that's something that my department wants directions from the leaders of each of the communities that we serve, on where do you want us to take it. One of the things that we also do is, we are now the central coordination information for all animals in the county. One of the things that law enforcement wanted was, they send an officer to a call, barking complaint. Officer gives a warning, two weeks later, another officer goes to the same address for a barking complaint, they give them a warning, two weeks later, another officer goes, another month later, and suddenly, these people aren't solving the problems, we're just compounding them because nobody is doing anything. We're just keep telling our children, "Don't do this." Now, every city sends us the information on all animal calls that they go out on, and we follow up on the barking complaints at 10 o'clock at night the next day or the next business day, and try to educate people on how to solve them, on the nuisance issues. The laws that we deal with, as I said, were written in 64, and 53, the, the state laws for commercial breeding of animals really don't exist. The inspection authority for a pet shop owner, for example, the rest were the Department of Agriculture, and we had multiple cruelty complaints in different pet stores, and we had no authority to investigate it unless this board decides to adopt, that allows my agency to enforce that law. We have breeders, the way of making money in today's economy is to breed dogs, and one of our problems is we're breeding these Brishons, we're breeding Huskies, we're breeding dog breed mills that are out there, just turning out puppies right and left, so that the groups will get $500,000 per dog, contributing to them, and the problem is, they contribute to all the other problems that are going on at the time. We work hand-in-hand with the shelters on trying to identify, and we, I can't say enough for the shelters have reached out and tr- and tried to meet us halfway on these things.
Went the wrong way on that one.
Okay.
All right, I'll find it again, go ahead.
Future program development.
I'll find it again.
So we're trying to, the, the purpose of what I want to say today is, we're trying to get this list, and this list was presented, this board, exactly like this at the last presentation in, uh, late winter of this year. These are the things we're trying to, to go to, increasing the awareness of the issues and dog licensing, rabies compliance, reducing the cost of, of animals and their, what's happened to them, to, to, not only to the county, to the shelters, but to the people. A good example of that yesterday was three dogs were running in the middle of Carpenterville Road, all got impounded by a passerby, picked them up, was able to trace one dog to a house which identified where the other dogs were. Uh, the do- the dog that didn't have the dog, that had the dog license, didn't get a citation, they got their free ride for 12 months. The other owner's saying, "Nah, we've always thought about it, yeah, why do we need a license?" They did get a citation. So we're trying to work with people, again, to get them to put those tags on there, comply with this. Why is a license not only important for getting pe- the animals home, that license is prima facie evidence that that dog's got a rabies certificate? When I was before the board, a week or two ago, that day, we had a person bitten, as I said, over in McKay's, they drove off, okay? So now, the person has to make a decision whether or not to take rabies vaccination for their own health. Had they had that dog license, at least the little dog bone that we have unique for our design, the person could have said, and we could give them more reassurance, that that dog license is signifying that the chances that dog having rabies is pretty little. These are all things that pop in. The board is, we're, we want to reduce the dog bite and attack incidents. Every day, we deal with animals that are just been given the wrong roles by their owners. An example of that, it was a house, it was at, a week or so ago, where large dogs were there, very aggressive, biting types. The owner leaves them in their, in the front yard to protect his house. Anybody, nobody will walk by that house, the whole neighborhood complains, okay? And what I said to the owner was, "Why are you doing this?" "Well, I, I need my house protected, I don't want it burglarized." "Okay, what do you do when you go in your house?" "Well, the dogs protect me." "Well, what happens at 2 o'clock in the morning when the ambulance gets called, 'Cause you've had a heart attack and a stroke,' and your animals are guarding it and keeping the police and the fire out of the house?" And we get those calls. And I honestly had to tell this person, "When I get that phone call, 'Cause I know your dogs, to come, let, get the paramedics in your house, I'm gonna tell the police to shoot your animals, 'Cause they're that dangerous." So, we need to reduce these things, and what I'm trying to teach people in the public is that having a guard dog's a great thing. My dog barks, my dog tells me things, but having an animal that you are, encourage them to bite, to attack, is paramount to giving a gun to a three-year-old and putting him in your front yard and telling him, "Guard my house." A dog has that three-year-old mentality, and doesn't know the difference between a Girl Scout selling cookies and a robber. We need to educate the people. This is where we're trying to take future programs down to educate the people. We need this board and all of our elected officials to get on board and help us educate the people. One of the things that we recognize in this county is, we're, we're one, five minutes away from a disaster at all times. Major fire, tsunami, whatever. When, in 1999, I think it was, when Katrina went off, a, quite a number of people refused to be rescued from their houses by the Coast Guard because the Coast Guard wouldn't take their animals. FEMA made a requirement thereafter, about a year or two later, that requires a program for every county to have to deal with disasters for animals. And we've been working with emergency services and public health and the shelters and volunteer groups to try to do that, to create what we call the Curry County, County Animal Rescue Team. Now, Curry County had a rescue team that came in and helped in the bar fart years ago. Why do we need to do it now? That team comes in to the community with no radios, no training, no insurance, no authority to cross a disaster line, nobody telling them that the fire's coming at them, no place to take the animals, we need to have it all codified ahead of time, and that's part of the money that we're trying to do with the dog licenses, is to develop this team and have these resources. We bit the, we, we're lucky this year, compared where we might not be. We, we took the, this board has been instrumental in giving us new software to deal with our problems, dog licensing, tracking concerns, all that, and when we started talking to people about the dog licensing program, we realized that there was a whole segment of the population with their animals that we weren't looking at. For example, people with cats. Every day, I get flyers, emails of floss kitties, okay? Okay? The state and the county does not wanna license cats. It's not a role. So what we've talked to the community about is issuing an identification tag. One-time fee. That if somebody finds a cat, they'll see Perry County, our phone number on it, call us 24/7, and we can say, "This is where the cat belongs." And it's been positively received by everybody I've talked to there. When we looked at that, we realized that other animals are another issue, going back to the disaster. I've met with about seven of the old ranchers in the county about this idea, is using our database as a voluntary tool for ranchers and farmers and people to register other animals. To simply tell us that on whatever road, we have horses, we have cattle. We don't care the numbers. It would be... It is free. There's no fee to it. But when we get the phone call on Carpenterville Road and Alder, we can look in the database and we know who to start calling. And we know in a disaster where we need to start moving our resources to move and rescue animals. The program we are doing on the disaster response is pattern after Shasta County's program, which went through the Camp Fire, the Ponderosa Fire, the Redding Fire, Paradise Fire. It works. They have advanced deployment of kennel facilities, all that. And we have ways to be able to get that at no cost if this board is authorizing us to go forward with this program. This program and the disaster program is something that not only we need, but every county needs. A presentation was made a couple of weeks ago about the 4-H people sitting up down at the fairgrounds for taking care of animals. This would dovetail into it. And the expense of our equipment and staff would be reimbursed by federal funds in disasters. To me, this is, to me, a no-brainer if we go forward with this thing and offer it to Southern Oregon and be cooperative with our neighbors. So as I said, today's pets are different. We have different roles for animals. We have different animals. We have great rules... Well, we have rules for our dogs. Our rules for our dogs, for example, are interpreted by every community differently. In Perry County, the rule has been, on a running at large, if the animal's under your control and you're nearby and you can control it, it's okay. State beaches, city of Brookings, Gold Beach, gotta be under a leash. We all interpret things differently. And that makes confusion for the public to understand where we're at. Why is leash laws important? The animals that are allowed to run, dealt with one the other day on... Well, my dogs are running on a 20-acre, 28-acre parcel in rural Perry County. Yeah, your dogs are running on it, but they ran off the 20-acre parcel and are chasing the deer and the elk, and are trying to attack them. Oh, well. Oh, and by the way, your animals got impounded because they ran down to the camp two miles away and people picked them up and drove them into Gold Beach. That's how we got involved in it. Well, they're on our property. Well, how do you stop a dog from understanding where his acre, 28 acres ends? People need to understand where we're at. Food for animals, critical. This morning, I dropped off 14 cans of cat food and a bottle, thing of litter. Got involved... From both shelters have stepped up and given food and materials to animals for people can't afford it otherwise. So we have a food bank for animals. So where do we go from here? What I'm coming in front of you folks for, before I turn it to the public, we need your help. We need you to give us directions of where you want us to go. Like I said, we've been responsive, not proactive. Education goes so far. But we need to have someone be authorized to go up in front of the public and say, "We have a leash law for this reason. We have a dog license for this reason. We have aggressive animal statute for this reason." I have not done this because I made a commitment that I don't speak on behalf of this county. I don't do interviews. I don't respond to interviews. You folks need to decide whether it's you or somebody else or nobody. But once we get that message out to the people, that's our first step to solving the problems with animals in our community. That's the first step in keeping people safe out there. Presenting new laws, tagging into what you said, Commissioner, presenting new laws. And why do we need new laws? Why do we need to suddenly recognize pigs as pets? That needs to be discussed. And what I would hope that the board would entertain is maybe reaching out to some of the community, put a committee together to talk about what fits this community, where we wanna go with this. Come up with the plans that we can bring it back to a regular session meeting to present you for upgrades of the statute. And use that committee members to help influence and explain this to the public, that it's not government forcing this down. That there's logic reasons why these things are being increased. Or not, depending on whatever the recommendations come out. The longer we wait to solve our problems with the animals, the worse it's gonna get. Honestly. We have everyday dog bite incidents. We have everyday incidents of dogs running at large. One of the things that people don't realize of a dog running at large is the owner's responsible for that dog. In Oregon statute, that's a misdemeanor. So if a car's driving down Carpenterville Road like yesterday and swerves and misses a dog and runs into a tree, the owner's got the liability for it. And we need to get that word out to the community. It's not just that we're being mean and trying to do this. Every owner I've talked to, yeah, I don't want my dog run over. But what about the people that are out there? And people get hurt every day across this country and die every day because of an animal or cattle or a horse running into the roadway. We need... I think we need to... I'm hoping this board will give directions back to my agency to start working with the community on trying to solve these problems and grow us from what we were in 1964, rural agricultural, spread-out county, to a urban interface counties in our main cities and deal with these things. That's pretty... I'm gonna put it out to the board for questions before I turn it over to Oregon and other people that wanna talk about problems.
Mr. Gold?
So I'm looking at this whole thing. Seems to me that the statutes need to be updated, that also possibly get the public involved, maybe the animal shelter folks involved, 'cause they know more about it. Set up some sort of a committee to make recommendations to this board about updated statutes. Is that what I'm hearing?
I would love to see that, and I'd love to be a part of it because we're the ones having to force it. And I know, I have statutes from 30, 40 different organizations across the state. State and on the West Coast. I know what works and what doesn't work.
So how about this? You come back to us with a recommendation as far as what community members you would like to see on this committee? How many? What should their characteristics be or their expertise? And then we can move forward after that. What you wanna call the committee, whether you wanna call it the Perry County Animal Services Committee or whatever. But come back to us with a recommendation so that we can act on it.
I'd be honored to do so. I'm just gonna qualify this, is that I'm not looking for a review board or an ongoing thing at this point. I'm looking for subject matter experts from the community, from the different organizations in the community and government to work together to identify the problems today.
Well, and that makes sense. Get the experts there.
And reach out to all the cities as well, to get them, you know, a little bit of everybody involved in it. Commissioner Boyce?
Thank you. Quickly, you mentioned you're the counties. That right there is enough for me. I don't think we need committees. Right now, anyway, I don't see the need. Because the counties have done the work. They don't mind if we ask, of course, if we borrow their information. You've already been there dozens of times. Bring us back an outline, as Commissioner Gold said. Yeah, I think it wouldn't take very long to upgrade and amend and it's the time.
I'm sorry.
Sorry, thanks. So Dave, was there... Was there any... You know, you presented a lot of information. Was there any one or two that you would prioritize, you know, before having a committee? Do we need a dangerous animal ordinance? Or, you know, is there something that you think is more urgent than others?
I think that the major problem I see with our statute ordinance that other counties have resolved, Jackson County, Coast Guard. Instead of just saying our ordinance applies to nuisance dogs, nuisance animals. Just a minor tweak in that would give us the tools necessary to be able to deal with a lot of these problems.
And then I just had one other question, if I could. You mentioned, besides dog licensing, cats aren't required to have licenses, and you were suggesting a registration concept?
A voluntary registration because we were issuing with tags.
Yeah. So I have my dog license, but I also have the RFID chip. I don't even know if that's the right word. But is that something, besides this registration, sound like a card? Would a chip concept handle that? And could that go into a llama or a, you know, peacock or pretty much any, a cat? And is that something that the county could do? Or is that something that the vets and the animal places do or something?
Okay, two questions then.
Yeah, sorry.
First of all, I'm all for chips. My animals are chips. However, here's the problem with chips. Number one, 90% of the chips' information are outdated. We move, we change our phone numbers, we don't update it. Number two, my belt is one of the scanners, okay? I scan a dog in the field or an animal in the field. It gives me a number. I've gotta go into a phone, go to a computer, find it out, call, and it takes about an hour to run down. So chips don't work on the immediate getting things back, but they work on long-term. So I'm all for chips.
Couldn't have said of the registration concept, though, with that? I mean, you would have to go...
You turned that off, Counsel, just so you recall.
Would that also apply to the registration concept with the...
We're collecting the data, yes. I don't think it supplants the registration. Because again, I'm looking at the phone call in the middle of Green Bay game of cattle running down Pistol River Road. I need to be able to just look on a database and go, "What people are there?" And start making phone calls.
Good. And then that was the other question, the registration thing. And this goes back to the other program you've implemented, is this program, the code enforcement program. Would this kind of information go in there so it'd be accessible to you?
It will be accessible to me. It'll be accessible to emergency responders.
JJ, I don't understand why... What's up with Green Bay? I just don't understand that.
My wife came from Wisconsin, a red, and became a Green Bay.
I understand.
JJ, he did mention the bulls, though. I heard him say the Green Bay, and then there's bulls running around.
So it's your recommendation then to have, to form a council or to form a group and get together and outline some things to bring back to the board?
I'd like to have, like, it's an informal committee. Meet as fast as we can to try to work this out, to get the community's input, bring it back to the board. The board signs in it. And the next recommendation, Commissioner, would be this board's cooperation in either being the face of presenting this or a committee member or code or somebody to explain this to the public.
Absolutely. Okay.
I have just one thing to add. Counsel Huddle asked if you had any real emergency-type things that need to be changed, ordinances. And I think what you said made perfect sense. Before we do the committee thing, I think that would be important to do first.
Have to be a formal committee. But I think what you're talking about is an ad hoc committee. Once they make the recommendations, they're gone. It's not a committee that's a standing committee. Good, okay.
All right. Thank you, sir. Is there anyone that wanted to make comments? Barnes? No? Everything's good?
Yeah, real quickly, I've met with Dave and spoke about this before. If you look in your code book at the county or at your dog ordinances, they're essentially so old that the typeface was set by Heidelberg. You know, I mean, the typewriter-type stuff, you know? It really needs somebody... You need a group to come in and just sit down. Dave and I discussed this yesterday. Just start at the beginning and just rework it. Bring it up to date, you know?
Okay, great. Thank you. Anyone else? All right, so then we're gonna direct you to do that. We'll wait to hear from you, Mr. Fortman. All right, so with that, our workshop is adjourned. Now, we're going to go back into regular session.